We're going to start the meeting. Our President, Mr. Kristin's out of town on business and his Vice President, I'm going to preside over the meeting today. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marianne, please take the roll.
Ms. Kristin?
Here.
Dr. King?
Here.
Ms. Towner?
Here.
Yes. Our first order of business is recognitions. Ms. Towner and Ms. Matane will be providing the certificates. So our first recognition is for the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. Six of RB's own have been named commended students in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 34,000 commended students through the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2019 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students place among the top 50,000 scorers of more than 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 competition by taking the 2017 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. Congratulations to Gus Pustus Gladstein, David Keen.
See, you've been hiding in the back.
You can wait up for the rest of your group. David Keen.
Congratulations. Good to see you again, honey.
Michael Kuz, Sophia Marhol, Luca Melavich, and Audrey Santora. Our next group is the --
You guys can sit down. Thanks, David.
Our next group is the Illinois Music Educators Association Senior Music Ensembles. On October 2nd, 2018, over 1,000 students auditioned for District 1 Illinois Music Educators Association Senior Music Ensembles. Twenty-two students will be representing RBHS music at the Jazz and Senior Chorus Festivals in November. Congratulations to -- let everybody get in first. Emily Rivoli Flute Senior Band, Abigail Morsi Percussion Senior Orchestra, Hannah Briounis Viola or Viola, yes, Senior Orchestra. Olivia Moyer Cello Senior Orchestra. Good job, Olivia.
Congratulations.
Benjamin Mola Marovic Guitar Senior Jazz Ensemble, James Scharzki Jazz Piano Senior Jazz Ensemble, Sophia Arcos Alto II Senior Chorus, Katie Culloden Soprano I Senior Chorus, Sarah Grace Gersh Soprano II Senior Chorus, Joy Greco Soprano I Senior Chorus, Margaret Greenlee Soprano II Senior Chorus, Quincy Hayes Alto I Senior Chorus, Noah Hodley Bass II, bass II, right, Senior Chorus, Molly McCormick Alto II Senior Chorus, Delaney O'Brien Alto I Senior Chorus, Tess Abachowski Soprano II Senior Chorus. Is that Ewan? Ewan Perry Bass II Senior Chorus, Zachary Pickton Tenor I Senior Chorus, Haley Rayfield Alto I Senior Chorus, Megan Reardon Alto II Senior Chorus, Eric Watson Tenor I Senior Chorus. We have a lot of good singers here, huh? What's that? They missed one? Sorry. Katherine Schulte Cello Senior Chorus, Senior Orchestra, excuse me.
Kristin, any of the students that came in, are they part of the award ceremony?
They are.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Have fun. It's the Student Association. Next is our Student Association Report.
Hello.
Why don't you all introduce yourself and tell us your position?
Every time.
Again, we have short memory, so.
I'm Michelle Jacobs. I'm the President.
Okay.
Rowan Ellwood, the Vice President.
I'm Sarah. I'm Director of Communication.
I'm David. I'm student spokesperson.
I'm Jessica. I'm the Secretary.
Wonderful. I'm sorry.
We have a lot of exciting things coming up. One of them is our Spirit Days. A lot of the students really enjoyed them during the Spirit Week, so we've decided to continue it throughout the year. So during various times of the year, we'll do a Spirit Day. So like for the holiday season, we'll do tacky holiday sweaters and like stuff like that. So we're really excited to get that going. We have one coming up for Halloween, so.
Very nice.
We also have the Coat and Blanket Drive coming up. We do that every year. We've been doing it for quite a while now. And we're starting on November 19th until December 6th, so students can bring in any coats and blankets. And we have like boxes set up decorated with like holiday cheer and everything in at least like four of our teachers' classrooms, one in every hallway, so that students can be able to see them at least once a day, and then one in the main office, so that they could drop it off at any time. And we're also like still not decided as to where the Coat and Blanket Drive will go. We're deciding between the Salvation Army and in like the past years, we've done it at a church in Oakbrook, so hopefully they'll want to have those.
Some of our other two fall and winter like donation drives that we do are Thanksgiving Baskets and Santa Anonymous, and both of those programs are through Community Support Services in Brookfield. So like this, these two, along with the Coat and Blanket Drive, are like our most important like community outreach that we do, because a lot of people that go to CSS were one students at RB, so it's like a direct donation right back to the community. And for Thanksgiving Baskets, we try to provide as many Thanksgiving meals as we can through food drive, and then we also collect money to buy gift cards for turkeys that also won the baskets. And then Santa Anonymous.
Sorry, I said about turkeys.
And then Santa Anonymous classes sign up to like raise money to get a gift for a kid off of this list that CSS gives to us. And so then, starting next week on the 31st at our essay meeting, we're going to break up into committees for each of the three drives that we're doing.
Very nice.
Another thing we do in the like holiday season is we send cards to troops. And so we have like a table down during lunches, and we send holiday cards, just like wishing them a happy holidays, Merry Christmas. So yeah, we're excited to start doing that.
And then lastly, we have our Bi-Able Blood Drive that we do. So the students will be signing up, starting next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 29th to 31st during lunches. And then they'll come in on November 7th, anywhere between 8:00 and 2:30 to donate blood, and each donation saves three lives. So we came up with a really big year last year, so we want to match those numbers.
Just so you're aware, we only have one meeting in November and one in December.
Yes.
So if the essay would like to report out, you'll have to come to the second Tuesday in November, meeting, and the second Tuesday of December's meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So if you want to push the Thanksgiving Drive and the Coat Drive and that, only one meeting each of those months.
Okay.
You put the good work, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our Superintendent's Report.
First of all, I'd like to begin. This week is Principal -- oh yeah, this is a good time if you want to, parents, students, if you want to. I know you want to stay, but homework's more important than the World Series. I understand. David, your dad volunteered you to stay.
Take notes. You need to take notes.
First of all, I'd like to begin by this week is Principal Appreciation Week, so on behalf of the Board of Education and myself, Kristin, thank you for all that you're doing for Riverside Brookfield High School and all the hours that you put in. So thank you very much. Curriculum Advisory Council, there's no update. Facility Advisory Council is meeting on October 29th. We'll discuss the replacing the HVAC in the pool, as well as an update on any other life safety repairs. Finance Advisory Council, Scott sent out a draft of the levy to the Finance Advisory Council. We'll have our first read of the levy in November, and we'll be approving that in December. Personnel Advisory Council, no update, and Policy Council, no update. Principals' Report's next, and then after Principals' Report, I'll bring up the Auditor Group Board.
Parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. and 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the Field House. We sent out another reminder today. During this time, parents can visit with as many teachers as they like, and they do not need to have an appointment. We are encouraging parents this year to bring a copy of their student's report card prior to arriving at RB. However, for those parents that forget or, you know, choose not to do this, we certainly will have self-serve kiosks for parents who'd like to avoid the line, or parents can wait in line to pick up a hard copy of their student's report card. We'll also have Bridget Wilmont, our Instructional and Technology Coach, available to answer any questions for parents regarding Schoology or Skyward. Additionally, current sophomore and junior parents also received an email about attending a dual credit information session during parent-teacher conferences, either at 3:00 p.m. or 6:00 p.m. in the Little Theater. It's a great opportunity to learn about all the dual credit opportunities that are available through Triton. We also have some available through Loyola as well.
That's at 6:00 this Thursday?
Correct. 3:00 or 6:00 in the Little Theater. It's hard to believe, but we are starting the course selection process already for next school year. So the process begins with current sophomores, and they meet with guidance counselors in a large group on October 30th and 31st in their science classes. And then following that, they meet individually with their guidance counselor to actually select their courses. And for sophomores, that happens November 5th through the 20th. Once we finish the sophomores, then we move on to the freshmen. So their process begins November 27th, and then juniors start when we return second semester. We always encourage all parents to look at their students' course selections and have a conversation with their students prior to that meeting, and review our online curriculum guide for specific courses. That will also have a lot of information about the dual credit opportunities. And the updated curriculum guide for next year becomes available on October 31st. There's a quick link on our website in one of the, on the left side, under the blue section, there's a quick link for the curriculum guide. Veterans Day is celebrated here on November 9th from 8:30 to 10:30, and students will have an opportunity to honor military veterans. The program begins with a continental breakfast for veterans, followed by a school-wide assembly, and ends with a personal question and answer session in students' classrooms, where veterans push in and share their experience, and students have the opportunity to ask them questions. If any veteran is watching and they're interested in attending, they can contact Mary Ann Nardi. The Fall Play is also rapidly approaching. The Fall Play is Alice in Wonderland, and the major roles are double cast, and so we're excited. That will have four different opportunities for people to come and support the Fall Play, and that is November 8th through the 10th at 7:30, and then on that Sunday, November 11th at 2:00 p.m. And tickets can be bought in advance at the business office or can be purchased at the door. This month is also National Building Prevention Month, and so next week, we're hosting an Acceptance Week with a variety of different activities each day, primarily in the cafeteria or as students enter the building to reach as many students as possible. One of those events that we are excited about trying is encouraging students to participate in a social media blackout day while they are at school, so we will see how well that goes. But we're trying to encourage students to disconnect and then connect with students maybe that they don't typically connect with throughout the day.
What day is that?
The actual social media blackout day, we'll be advertising it earlier in the week, but I think we're promoting it for that Friday. Also, I have two reports under the Principals' Report. The first is on page seven of the Board Book. This is a brief report. It's just an update from ACT. It's our College Readiness Report on the class of 2018. So we talked about that this would be coming up soon when Kylie Lindquist reported out on our district goals, but the average ACT for this class was a 22.1, and it went up to a 22.4. So students, several students at some point took the ACT again and were able to improve the overall composite average. The second document is, that I want to share with you tonight, is on page nine, and it's an update on the new school report card. The 2018 school report card will officially be released on October 31st. And once it is released, we will post it on our website, but in preparation of that, I wanted to share some information and go over some of the new data points that will be included on the school report card. Probably the biggest and most significant change is the inclusion of a summative designation for each school based upon several indicators. So on page nine, you see a pie chart of several different indicators. So the exciting part about this is that with No Child Left Behind and our old accountability system, it only relied on performance on the PSAE, which was primarily the ACT. ESSA, the new accountability system, Every Student Succeeds Act, really takes into account a lot of other factors. So that's exciting at face value, but when you get down to some of the specifics, the state has yet to kind of work some of those out. And so I just want to give a brief overview of some of them. So if you look at the two grade-out areas on the pie chart, Climate Survey and College and Career Readiness Survey, currently, all schools in the state of Illinois are getting full credit for those, because they have yet to, the state has yet to figure out how they're actually going to collect data. And all of these indicators at the particular percentage are what impacts our final category or designation that the school receives. So currently, we receive full credit for those indicators, as do all schools. The next two indicators are math proficiency at 10% and English Language Arts at 10%. So that is pulling from our performance on the SAT. What is important to know about both of these is that these are based off of the state benchmarks, they're not based off of college board, college readiness benchmarks. And so, under English Language Arts, the college readiness benchmark from college board, who designed the SAT, had a benchmark of 480, but Illinois set that bar a little higher at 540. So we report out on college board's benchmarks, so you will see a dip in that eventually from what we initially reported out on. Same thing with math. College board's benchmark is 530, and the state's benchmark is 540. And then just something to keep in mind, next year, those percentages will change, because the state will include the Illinois Science Assessment, and that's a test taken in March in all biology classes. That is a relatively new test. Students take that test in March, and we just received the scores last week. And so there's a bit of a delay with that, and it certainly is a new test that we are continuing to learn more about. The next indicator is English Language Learner's Progress to Proficiency. So the state is now tracking our students that are in our EL program with the intent that within five years of being identified as being an English Language learner, that they should reach a proficiency level.
Is there a reason to refer to his English as second language?
Correct.
So it's people, English is not their native language?
Correct. Yes. And then the next one, you can see the biggest portion of the chart is the graduation rate. That is comprised of three things. The four-year graduation rate is 30%, the five-year graduation rate is 15%, and then the six-year graduation rate is 5%. Two other indicators, ninth grade on track, so that is a percent of ninth grade students that have earned five year-long credits and have not failed more than a semester of a core course, so biology, English, math, et cetera. And that is not a new indicator. That has been within the last couple of years. And then the last indicator, which is new, is chronic absenteeism. So this is the percent of students that miss 10% or more of the school year, and that includes excused absences or unexcused absences. So that's a big shift from what was reported out on the past, which was just chronic truance, which only looked at excused absences. This looks at, or sorry, only looks at unexcused absences. This looks at both.
Is that a problem for us, then?
I think --
Because we don't, we only focus on unexcused absence.
Well, we always look at students that miss 5%. Internally, we have always been looking at that data and identifying students that have missed more than 5% of the school year, more than 10% of the school year, and trying to provide interventions to them. It's just something new that's on the school report card. And then on page 10, what you'll see is all of that is used to identify which category a school falls into. And so to keep the language, this is the state language, but basically, an exemplary school is a school that is in the top 10% and has a graduation rate of higher than 67%. And the most important part is that they have no underperforming subgroups. If they have an underperforming subgroup, they immediately fall to underperforming. The next category is a commendable school, and that's a school that doesn't fall into the 10%, top 10%, does still have a graduation rate of 67% or higher, and again, has no underperforming subgroups. Again, if there's one underperforming subgroup, that school would also fall into underperforming.
So if you had seven subgroups plus the total, and you've got six subgroups performing in the total, but you're one underperforming, you're automatically dropped down.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. No matter how well you do with anything else.
You're going to see tons of schools that were once commendable or exemplary become a lesser designation via this tool.
Yes. And that might not happen right away either, but that will, we do envision that that will certainly happen over time.
How do you determine if a subgroup is underperforming?
So that's pretty complicated, but basically --
That's pretty important, though.
Basically, the lowest performing group is the bottom 5% of schools. And every school gets assigned a score. It's not public. It's not publicized, but every school gets assigned a score that's used to determine the top 10%, the bottom 5%. So all of your subgroups have to have a score that's above that lowest 5%.
Also, it's not as bad as it seems.
So, well, it's not necessarily as bad as it seems, but the tricky part is --
There's 800 high schools in Chicago in the state. The only, or right?
Well, but --
So you only need to be above 40 of them.
Well, whatever that, whatever the score is, not above the actual, whatever their index score is based off of all that whole pie chart that we discussed on the front page.
Right.
So the challenging part in this is that this is a moving target, right? We don't know what the cutoff is for the top 10%, and whatever the cutoff is for this year could be totally different than next year and the year after that. The same thing with the bottom 5%. So it's really, you know, even if you do a great job and really improve, or make significant gains, or you're just doing really well, it's all relative to all of the schools in the state of Illinois, and that can, that can shift significantly.
What does it mean by the lowest 5% of the Title I schools?
So pretty much at this point, every school in the state of Illinois is considered a Title I school, with the exception of about five schools. I don't know what those schools are, but --
What does it mean? They don't get Title I funds?
Correct.
Anybody that gets Title I funds is a Title I school?
Correct.
Okay.
So I know this is a lot, you know, but this is our new accountability system, and we'll learn a little bit of how that gets implemented and how that impacts us once we get our school report card.
Okay, I have some questions on this, if you don't mind. So there was a nice article in The Trip, and it talked about the school report card. And whoever is in charge of the assessment for the State Board of Education, his quote was, "They want a system that measures the impact of a school on student learning, no matter where a student starts." In other words, it really emphasizes growth. And his quote here says something to the effect, "Student growth counts for one half of a school's rating at the elementary and middle school level." So how is the growth thing going to be put in for high schools?
It is not at this point.
So it's in progress?
To my knowledge, it is not necessarily in progress. They haven't mentioned it at all at the high school level, because this is the first year that states are, or Illinois is required to give the PSAT 8, 9 to freshmen and the PSAT 10 to sophomores. So until they have several years of data for that, it would be hard for them to determine growth, whereas at the elementary level, they've always been assessing kids throughout several grades, and they have access to that data to assess growth.
So potentially, we could be on top of this? Because I remember the last time Kylie was here, she mentioned about tracking our, like percentiles. And the way the state's doing it is basically by groups, basically white, black, Hispanic, Asian, low-income, English learners, that type of thing.
Yeah, those are the subgroups.
So looking at the big picture and the boards, we have this ACT goal, and a lot of that depends on who we have coming in. I personally think switching to this growth model is a reasonable thing to do, and it's something maybe, as a Board, we'll talk about this more, but I think this is an opportunity, especially if we're gathering all this data, to get on top of this and be a trendsetter. It's just something to think about.
So that this system is going to be used beginning with the current school year?
Yes, yes. So at the, at the end of October, all of this information will be on our school report card, and we will have a designation into one of those categories.
And are they taking, like, if you look at the graduation rate, it says four-year graduation rate, 30%. So if our graduation rate in four years is 95%, are they taking 30% of 95% and giving us a score, or what does that even mean?
Yes, each, each, each indicator has its own unique formula, but graduation rate is probably the most simplistic, and so yes, that is the process that they use for graduation.
So there's, so if you really consider, instead of the 50% of graduation, they really sub?
Correct.
So there's 10 measures, and the fifth highest one, the fifth highest weighted one is chronic absenteeism. And then we also have one that you get, it's free, a freebie this year, but it won't be as, apparently, all we got to do is get kids to fill out a survey.
Correct, yes.
So there's two of them that we have, we can't talk about, that come in high, they grow, that this, was there a full, you know, did the moon come up or not? This is get kids to take a survey?
Yes.
And get kids to show up for school, including excused. So we have to impress upon the parents and the students that it's important that they come, whether it's excused or unexcused, right?
Yes, absolutely. And we're already, we're already doing a lot of new things in regards to getting, sending that message out this year with our, our new school psychologist and Dave Mannan as well.
And besides having this weighting, which of course, the most bothersome is you can become underperforming on this lowest five, but might not be as bad, does it affect how we get funds or anything, Kevin?
At this point, no.
Okay. Except we're going to have to get some, love to see what kind of statement the board's going to give us.
When you become underperforming or lower performing, you have to submit plans and hire address in those subgroups.
And then there should be funding, some funding that is tied to that, yes.
And we, because we did, in the last report card, didn't we have one group that was, I mean, the equivalent to underperforming?
I don't recall. Like I said, this will be very different, because also the subgroups are smaller. You only have to have 20 students for it to be considered a subgroup.
Before, it was 50 or something.
I believe, I thought it was 40.
Yeah, I thought it was.
45, somewhere around there.
So with this model, it's not a linear relationship from year to year, because every year, it's a new relative relationship. So we could actually increase, and many of the things we're doing, our students could have an increased growth, we could have increased scores, and still drop down in a category.
Yes.
Because another school had, went up to the top percent or did something in one of those other measures. So these categories do not necessar -- Because another school had, went up to the top percent, or did something in one of those other measures. So these categories do not necessarily give us an indication if we're doing better or worse. We have to be careful about that.
Well, it does versus the group. It's, it's like everything we do. You know, the fact somebody gets scores higher on the ACT or SAT doesn't necessarily mean they're a better student, but that's how we grade people. So overall, this is done the same at every school, and if we're improving, we should do better, and if we're not, we won't.
But we could still improve and fall down.
Yes. Is it possible, but is it likely?
It could be.
I, I think the major concern with, that I have and a lot of, of schools have, is with the subgroup. You could have a subgroup that underperforms in one area that affects their score, their overall score, which then impacts the whole school. So to Laura's point, you could be doing great as a school across the board, but maybe, you know, one of the subgroups.
But you still have to do better than 5%, the worst 5%.
But we could become underperforming.
You could become underperforming pretty quick.
With 20 kids only. So if you had some people move in because they were relocated due to earthquake or something.
We could find all kinds of reasons to say there's problems, but the fact of the matter is, all we have to do is do as, at least as good as 95% of the schools. We gotta do better than the worst 5%. I don't think that's an unrealistic goal for the school.
That's low performing. That's not underperforming.
That's how you get to underperforming.
No, underperforming, you could be in the top. Yes.
You have to have a group or the school where their number is not, doesn't exceed the lowest 5% of the overall grade of the worst 5% of the schools in the state, right?
Correct. But even if you're a top, even if like, you're the top school in the entire state, and you have one subgroup, so you have a group of 20 students.
I get that. But the point is, we're comparing ourselves to the worst 5% of the schools in the state. I don't think that's something we should be able to feel like we can do.
We're not comparing ourselves to the worst 5%.
What am I saying wrong? You said that again. She keeps telling me I'm wrong. What am I saying wrong? In order to be dropped down, you have to have a lower score than the highest of the lowest 5% in every subgroup and the school, right?
No, just those 20 kids.
Every, that's a subgroup, right?
One subgroup.
So you can't be.
Hold on, I, don't correct me when I said, you said no, and then you repeated what I said. Every subgroup and the school have to perform better than the, the top of the 5% of the lowest schools in the state, right?
Correct.
That doesn't seem like a very unrealistic goal for this school, that we can't do better than the, than 90, equal or better even for a subgroup than the 95% of the students? We only have to do better than the 5% of the worst schools?
So I, I think.
That doesn't scare me.
So I think where it scares me is that a subgroup is only 20 students.
I understand that.
So within that group of 20 students, if your, if your subgroup is that small, it only takes a few students to significantly underperform or not attend a school.
Your, your theory is, is your theory that every school in the top 95% overall could have a subgroup that's below that 5%, so everybody's underperforming?
I wouldn't say everybody, but I would say a significant, that's how it could play out. That is the concern among schools, that a significant number of schools would all of a sudden be underperforming because they have a very small subgroup. They don't have a subgroup that consists of 100 students, but maybe they have a subgroup that consists of 20, 21 students, and there's a few of those students that really struggled that year that could bring that down, yes.
Well, if that happens, the state's gonna have to change it, because they don't possibly have the resources to manage 800 schools that have subgroups that come below.
Correct.
It would make no sense, right?
Right, but sometimes that happens in Illinois, and so I think since none of us have seen how this has played out yet, there is that concern among schools that if you have a very small subgroup, that that could significantly impact schools. But we'll know more once, you know, we see this play out this year and following years to come.
We're just, I think Kristin is just preparing the board for worst-case scenarios somewhere down the line. Should that happen, she wanted to make sure the board has a better understanding of the four categories, and I don't think we're at any potential being a low performing or underperforming at this point.
Well, I think we, we can probably sort of take this into account, that it's, you know, depending on other factors, we can make our own assessment. This whole thing, it sort of bothers me, this thing about race that they have here. These subgroups are based on race. I mean, to me, you could throw that all out the window and just put it in percentiles, and the schools track by the percentiles that you have given, and how do those percentiles grow? Then there's no excuse. Well, I have this percentage of this racial group or that. I mean, it really should be irrelevant. If you're coming in, percentiles are percentile, and they're growing a certain percentage, that's what should count. So I don't know how you feel about that, but we as a board can, you know, sort of do our own thing. With, of course, your recommendation, because you guys understand this a lot more than we do.
Again, this is just one snapshot. People put up, and so sometimes when people are looking to move into your community, they'll pull up the school report card to see, you know, how are they financially, how are they as a graduation rate? I mean, so these are, this is just one snapshot, that the state's trying to become more transparent throughout the state, assessing and advertising how their schools are doing to the communities and to the taxpayers. Dr. Keen, you're absolutely correct in that. When we revisit the district goals, it's something that we can, we've discussed for a while now about shifting more. Instead of trying to get a 26 on the ACT, they're trying to achieve maximum growth from the time we get them as freshmen till the time they leave as seniors. So there's definitely some room, and this could serve as a point to start discussions.
And, and I think the good news is too, that the state has changed the model a little bit, because some schools that were considered high performing weren't meeting the needs of their subgroups, and that was lost in the mix, right? And so those kids were absolutely being underserved, flying under the radar, and nobody cared because it wasn't being reported. And so in this aspect, there's some accountability for making sure every kid gets everything that they need, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's certainly an improvement from no child left behind.
I did have one question. In the new ACT scores, there was a significant, I won't say significant, but there was a large bump in the state average. And when I looked at the N, it looked like a subset of the state was used to calculate that score. Why would that have happened?
So this is the, that is the first year that schools were not required to give the ACT.
So then there was a select group of students who chose to take that ACT?
Correct, which is why you see an increase in the state average, yes.
If I might say, you should give yourself some credit, the school should for, I mean, there's a lot of commended scholars this year, I think more than usual. I think it'd be nice on this report card that they, you know, have something, some statistic like that, in terms of commended scholars as a percentage of, you know, school enrollment. I mean, you don't wanna, you wanna provide a minimum education to everybody, I get that. So you sort of flag the schools that are the lowest performing in certain groups, but we should also celebrate, you know, high performance. Because the people at the top, you know, the commended scholars are gonna have an outsized influence on our society, just the way it is. So I just wanna commend you for, and the school and the support staff for the number of scholars that we had this year.
We had six, and then from the board meeting in September, we also had one student that was National Award semifinal, so we have seven total that.
Chris, Kristin, I know that some schools are not only putting up this on their websites, but they're also adding their own narrative to it to tell their story, right? Because if you're not telling your story, who is and who's not telling it right? So do we have, are we gonna add any additional data, like what Dr. Keen just said, some of those numbers, to what's gonna be reported by the state on our website?
So we already do that. We have all our goals up there. We show that we've been tracking attendance for five years, and we have our profile up there. And this will go on, the school report card will go on the same link as those pages, so people would be able to see there are other indicators that we're tracking.
Good, 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 good.
Ready for the auditor?
Yep.
Okay, Chris. And Bob, Chris, you sent in some responses. The board has them in paper copy next, and these are some of the questions submitted by a board member. Mary Ann, I don't know, do we have these responses or, for on the overhead, or are we just gonna go to the page number of the audit? Because you're gonna have to then follow what he's talking about, each question, or the page number, so we can put that up on the overhead. Would that work easier?
This thing is based on the audit page number, so we're gonna have to do that.
I'm just gonna, I have some prepared notes, and I tried to cover a majority of the questions. So I think I'm gonna do things a little differently this year. Instead of just going to direct page numbers, I'm gonna read what I prepared, and then after that, we can kind of go into some additional things.
So you're thinking what you mixed in your prepared notes should answer a lot of these questions?
Yes, that's kind of what I went with this year. This way, we don't have to just drill through specific audit report numbers, okay?
Okay. And then the only other thing, Chris, is if you, if you need to reference a specific page, just give Mary Ann time to find it.
Will do, will do.
Because the board book page will be slightly different from the audit page.
Will do.
And Mary Ann, the audit starts on board book page 55.
Okay, so I always like to start with the district's financial profile score from ISB, because it gives a good summary of the district finances as a whole. The highest attainable score is 4.0. This fiscal year, the district received a score of 3.8, which was an improvement from last year's score of 3.7. The district's score has been consistent over the last five fiscal years. The 3.8 score of recognition is the highest category of financial strength. This means that the district has healthy cash and fund balances and a healthy percent of long-term debt remaining. This rating also symbolizes the outstanding job the entire business office does on an ongoing day-to-day basis. From the board's oversight to Dr. Skinkis and Scott Burnick, this accomplishment should not go unnoticed. It is not usual for a single school district this size to receive a score this high and to do it consistently. Dr. Skinkis, Scott, and the entire business department have done a wonderful job to achieve this. I want to thank Dr. Skinkis and Scott for their hard work and continuous improvement within the business department. The district has increased its operating fund balance from $15.3 million in fiscal year 2013 to $25 million at the end of fiscal year 2018. This has resulted in significantly improved cash flow. The district finished the year with an operating surplus of approximately $917,000, driven by management oversight and close monitoring of the budget. The district continues to restructure its debt to try to, to try and save its taxpayers' dollars while continuously improving the buildings and its facilities. It has been a pleasure to come back to the district that sets its bar at the highest level of fiscal responsibility. At this time, I will kind of divulge in some of Board Member Walsh's questions, and then take any additional questions from the board. And like we said earlier, I've responded with an additional memo that the board has just received. The majority of the questions regard to the implementation of GASB statement number 75, accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. GASB refers to the Government Accounting Standards Board, who is responsible for creating accounting reporting standards for state and local governments in the United States. GASB 75 superseded GASB statement number 45, which basically was accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. Excuse me. If this new statement was not adopted, the district would receive a qualified or modified audit opinion. This new statement was implemented by GASB to be consistent with the previously adopted GASB 68 statement regarding pensions. This new statement, GASB 75, has two sets of plans. The first being the Teachers' Health Insurance Security Fund, and then the second being the District's Health Benefit Plan. The Teachers' Health Insurance Security Fund actuarial study was recently withheld from the Illinois Auditor General because of errors found in the audit report. I'm, I'm sure the board's aware that this report was in error. Did you guys know about this report?
Yeah, I put it in a Friday update.
At this point, all my school districts, unfortunately, are on extension, as we wait for the Illinois Auditor General to release a new, new report with the correct figures. The Teachers' Health Insurance Security Fund relates, relates only to TRS employees. The second plan, which is the Health Benefit Plan, relates to only IMRF employees. That study was provided by Clarity in Numbers. So one study is provided by the state, one study the district had to purchase. Both of the open, OPEB plans, previously adopted, both the OPEB plans and the previously adopted pension studies are provided by third-party actuaries. A majority of the questions regarding liabilities and assets and disclosures are just given directly to me. A lot of these questions that Mr. Walsh, that you have, it's not really my level of expertise. We get the reports, we use the numbers. When I make calls in, they always direct me to somewhere else. And they just basically tell me that these additional liabilities, if they go up or down, are based off changes in assumptions, assumptions that an actuary only knows, and I don't.
And again, and I'm not an actuary, but maybe I can save you some of this, so you don't have to go through the whole thing. So what I don't understand is still, if you go to page eight, Mary Ann, I think board page, page 61. I, I think I could save a lot by just clarifying the question I was trying to ask. That's not the right, is it?
One more, 61, Mary Ann. 61 of board.
61?
This table one.
Scroll down to the next, to the bottom.
Okay, that one.
That's one.
Go down a little bit more, so you can see the number that's highlighted. Okay, so you've had to marry up two different accounting statements.
Right.
And one thing that changed in doing this, it went from a two-year study to a three-year study.
From a three to a two.
Excuse me, from a three to a two. And it's just an actuarial study.
Correct.
I still don't understand, if that's all we did, why is there an $11 million that credit this year, and there was zero last year?
Because that $11 million, the majority of that $11 million is strictly from Teachers' Health Insurance Fund, which, that's the report that I'm talking about, that the Illinois Auditor General has withheld. I don't know if that number's.
So I might be wrong. This is the one they're gonna correct, maybe correct.
Correct. It could be too, I'm.
Because again, I'm not an actuary.
Right.
But going from doing a two-year analysis to a three-year analysis on the same people with the same numbers.
Right.
Shouldn't have had an $11 million adjustment.
I mean, the.
Okay, so the thing is, we can't know, because that could be completely wrong.
It could be higher, though. That's my fear. I have districts, some of my bigger districts, like Woodstock's 200, $70 million liability.
Okay.
I mean, these numbers are substantial, and unfortunately, I don't necessarily know why. When I talked to the internal auditor of the centralized management services who basically administer this, then somehow, it's now flowing through the Auditor General, you know, told me that in, in his area, one individual person is costing their system $30,000 per year. So if you look at the entire state in terms of, with teachers, it would make sense that this liability would be tremendous. Now, that number only relates directly to if everyone in that district retired. So we're talking about 22, 23-year-old kids out of college that are being with, that are being put into that study.
So again, that part we'll get to, but, so one thing, Kevin and Scott, is when we figure this out, if it does end up being like this huge from 0 to 11 million, whether it's more or less, it's millions of dollars, we need to have an explanation of why it changed. Because the one thing that we have to be a little careful about, again, you understand, without doing, you understand the actuarial value of this and this, but technically, it's still a liability of the district. It's kind of like when they go, how much is the pension liability for a state? Is it 100 billion? Is it 150 billion? It's a way of calculating it. It may never rise to either one of those numbers. It could get bigger, depending upon how interest rates are, right?
You're absolutely correct.
But technically, this is a liability of the district.
Correct.
Even though it may never materialize for us.
Right, and this liability only, this does not affect your fin- financial statements. This liability is only put on for GASB 34, so that's your first two exhibits of the audit report.
And then the last thing, just for clarity purposes, we have to follow GASB, right?
Correct.
Or you have to.
Qualify our opinion.
Qualify our opinion, but we don't, as a board, say we're gonna adopt a new GASB or not. We just, our, our rules are, we have to follow GASB.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That was the thing, I didn't, I mean, you were giving explanations, and I appreciate that, but. that, but it didn't kinda get to the heart of why is $11 million different than it was last year?
Right.
And what you're saying is, we don't know for sure whether that is going to end up.
Right.
Could be more, could be less.
Correct. And what I can do, too, is when they released the audit report, because they actually took it off the Auditor General website, I can send it to Dr. Skinkis so he can, you know, show you the actual, you know, because it, the report is for the entire state of Illinois, every school district. So I mean, it's not just School District 208 that's receiving this high liability. It's across the board.
Okay. Want to go on, Chris?
You know, another question, you talked, you asked about last year's audit report, if it was being correct or not. The audit report was correct. I can actually point you out to this page. It's audit report page... 13, audit report page.
64, Mayor. Is that the one she has up there, Chris?
It is.
Yes.
So you see some of my highlights, and they're actually highlighted. So what happened when I was doing my GASB 34 work paper, I realized that I did not allocate the 2014 and prior debt service, it was actually a refund, to the debt service line item. So it wasn't a change that I had to make, but normally if I find something like that, it wasn't material, I felt like I should change it just to be more transparent. So that's why I did it. In total, property taxes still remain the same. It's just between the two classes, you know, I just, since I made that mistake, I obviously wanted to just correct it, just to obviously make the audit report correct. You asked about the increase in the debt service other expense line item, which is on page, audit report page 17, more or less 18. And if you could scroll down to the bottom. Keep going. Yeah, a bit more ways. It's page 18, you're on page one, so if you want to keep going.
It's actually 90, 91.
It's page 18.
92, Mayor.
92, 91, 92, yeah.
Page 92.
And if you could scroll down almost to the end of the page, so the middle, no, a little, right there.
289, 920.
Right, so that number there is your fees from the issuance of the 2017 A, B, and C bonds. That's why that number was higher.
Okay.
Okay? Copier leases you asked about. Copier leases are now included as capital leases under note five. They haven't been considered operating leases since the fiscal year 2016 audit, so in '17 we got new copiers, we switched over to a capital lease.
Okay.
Okay? And then I think that kinda covered most of your questions.
I do, too. Does anybody else have any questions they want to ask?
This is John.
Yeah, on the audit, anything on the audit, that's what you're gonna do.
Anything I possibly could ask, we're gonna go ahead and ask.
You wanna know what, we're changing a class? I don't think you should ask.
Let's see, I'm looking at... It's on the pension obligation.
Okay.
I was reading it here. I think it's like page 111?
So the notes, I'm assuming, pension disclosures?
Yeah, I think, right, I think.
One second, Chris, I'll get you there. It's your page...
36.
37 or...
36 is 111.
36 is 111 board book.
So it'd be 37 of the audit.
Okay.
Pension liabilities, pension expense.
Sure.
That, John?
Right, so I'm just trying to understand this. Do you have that?
Yeah, I'm here.
So this is employer's proportion share of the pension liability. So that's ours, is 1.2 million, is that right?
Correct, correct.
So how does that, how do they get that?
So this one here, this is gonna be TRS. This report is given to me directly from TRS, who uses a third-party actuary.
Sure.
To be honest, I don't necessarily know how they come up with the percentage between the employer's share versus the state's share. For your size of your district, I've, this is a pretty good number compared to the other ones I've seen. But for me to explain to you how they come up with this, again, would have to be something that maybe me and Scott should contact TRS, and they're gonna direct us to someone else and to someone else. And it's kinda how the state's been with these pension liabilities. It's very difficult to get any answers from these people.
So if you look at the second line, the 85 million, is that potentially what our teachers here and our pensioners are owed?
Correct.
The whole 87 million.
The whole 87 million, right.
The state owes them 85.
But again, that's if everybody in the district...
Retired.
Retired tomorrow.
Yeah.
If everybody retired tomorrow.
Correct.
Even if they were 25.
Correct.
What's our share of the TRS premium?
For the employer or with the teacher?
Our share, or the employer.
0.58.
Okay. Somehow they came up, it's about 1.5% of their liabilities are, so.
It's 0.58%.
Then 9.4% credible earnings.
That's for the teacher portion.
That's for teachers.
Correct.
The employer portion.
It's less than a percent, right?
Something to that nature, yes.
So that share of the liability of ours is 1.5%.
Right.
So probably somewhere in line with what our share of the premium is.
Right. And then obviously then, you know, in the note, too, it talks about now TRS is working on going to tier three.
Right.
Which, from what I've been hearing, some districts are kinda being used as a guinea pig. School District 158, one of my clients, their payroll director's been working with TRS. But it looks like this tier three is gonna be basically about a 403B plan.
Right.
And what I've heard, too, is that these millennials, they don't even understand what a pension is. So there's no point for them to even be given that opportunity, especially with the state's pension crisis, to offer it anymore because in their mind, they'll be rich by their 30, and they're gonna have to save for retirement, just like someone like me. But I think that's probably why they're varying toward this tier three. But again, nothing's set in stone with that. And if I do hear anything else, I will obviously send a memo to brief Dr. Skinkis, Scott, and the board.
So the 85 million is more of a total, grand total, any potential future obligation for anybody that's here now.
Correct.
What's a reasonable number in terms of like current payments?
See, that's in there, that's in the note disclosure, so like...
Sorry to jump this topic.
No, no, it's okay. For TRS, for instance, audit report page 53.
Okay, so we gotta go...
We gotta go ways. So you see here, this is the schedule of employer contributions for TRS. So the district's required, we were only required to contribute $67,000. We contributed $89,000, and that difference is basically kinda goes to federal funds. It's kind of a misleading schedule. These schedules are mandatory. I wish they would actually lengthen this so it would actually show, we don't really, aren't owed 21,000. It's kinda covered within that federal amount. But as you can see here, for '17, we paid $90,000, not, you know, 1.8 million. So that, this is more of your yearly contribution amount.
For us, but what about the state, this total state obligation? Is that 12 million?
Right, correct. And the state would be paying, the state paid $8.4 million on your behalf. That's in the note on page 36, if I can view you back there, if you guys don't wanna go to that page, but...
We'll take your word for that.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just trying to get a handle.
Right.
Chris, the reason I think they're asking this is, everybody always keeps hearing, especially during election time, cost shift, pension shift.
Right.
So that would just give the board an idea.
Right, I mean, I'm hoping, and for boards and school districts and frankly, all municipalities, that the pension doesn't, or the state doesn't, you know, force this onto the district. You know, because obviously the state's covering for a majority of the retirement. You keep hearing about it, will it ever change? I have no idea.
Well, so this, the 9 million or whatever, that's probably the worst-case scenario that we anticipate.
Correct.
That's reasonable. If they were to dump everything on us now, we'd have to come up with $9 million.
That would be correct, yep.
Yeah, it's almost half our budget.
And that 85 million with the state is our portion of how they talk about that $100 billion to $150.
And that's why I think they're switching to this 403B so we can, it can get, it could be taken off the state side, and then districts can, you know, budget accordingly just in case that happened.
Well, one of your early statements in this audit report talked about the poor financial condition of the state of...
Correct.
...this whole pension thing. I mean, it's sort of scary to see that, but I think, I mean, being a pessimist, pessimist but also realist, is they're going to give this to us in some fashion.
They will.
And I'm just trying to get a handle, and the board is probably gonna have to deal with this situation. $9 million, worst case, half of that's like $4 million.
Sure.
Well, they were talking...
They'd phase it in, obviously.
Yeah, half a percent or percent per year.
Right.
So could you put in one other question on your list?
Sure.
Kevin, I know you're not an expert really for Scott, if that's okay. The 85 million, I don't think it's what they'd pay out today if everybody retired today because a lot of our employees would get zero, they're not eligible for a pension. I think it's the actuarial value, what would be owed, based on some interest rate calculations. If everybody retired at normal retirement age and their salaries increased at some rate like that. So can you just confirm what's the basis?
What do you think?
What is that?
I'd like for you to work with Scott on that.
Yeah, we can take care of that, that's not a problem.
No, I mean, Chris...
Scott, thanks a lot, because...
This is Chris.
Chris, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You know what I meant. Sorry about that, but I appreciate you taking the time and effort, it was very helpful.
So I know you did add memo, and what I would recommend in the future, especially with board changing, there'll be four new board members possibly after April, so next fall when you return, I think I'd like for you to continue to do the executive memo, which is a summary highlighting key points. You know, Mr. Walsh has a strong expertise in finances, but some of the other board members, you know, some of this is moving kinda quick, so...
Yeah, I apologize for that.
It's okay, and future presentation, I think it was good that you did send that memo, so...
It was.
Someone who'd never seen an audit before could look at that memo and say, okay, you go to 55, the number that's highlighted in yellow, that's our fund balance, that's a good number, that's...
Well, like we talked, too, I mean, I think me going forward as a partner in accounting firm, too, you know, you actually kinda inherit things as you go. We never really did that, but I think it's a great idea, even for all my clients, to know, you know, for board members, too, that aren't necessarily financially savvy, to just look at these few key points so they can have a more understanding of the audit as well.
So there's two kind of outstanding issues. One is, at some point, you're gonna have to determine if the numbers have to change, and then you're gonna have to change the report. But that's all that should change.
Right.
The numbers affected by that.
Right. Your fund financials are final, those will not change. The only thing that will change is part of that THIS note disclosure, and then some of the other post-employment benefit liability amounts, if those do get changed. And what I'll do is, when the final report is released, and I'm hoping it's released sometime soon, I know Sickich has already started auditing for the next year's report. I'd like them to get the previous one done, but I will send another memo out with the changes that were made with the release of the report. Now, ISB obviously knows about this. I'm getting nervous that, you know, on the state side, this could take a long time. If it starts coming to within crunch time and ISB shows no guidance within, obviously we have till December 15th, my firm's gonna have to make a decision what we're gonna do with these numbers.
But it's a problem for everybody.
It is.
So the state's gonna be providing some guidelines, I assume.
I would, I would hope that, well, I found this out two days before the deadline.
Right.
So I hope that they will either, you know, extend the extension.
Right.
Or they're gonna have to tell us what to do because I'm not submitting an audit report with my name, knowing that these numbers aren't correct.
Right.
So...
And, but again, just so everybody understands, these are just liabilities that have to be listed.
Correct.
But our fund balances and the actual audit of the district's today cash flow finances are in there, and they're of a very strong position.
Correct.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Chris, thank you.
Have a great evening.
Oh, Scott.
Scott, Chief Financial Officer, Director of...
And it's going back to what page, Scott?
12, I believe. The first report that I'd like to highlight is the monthly financial report ending September 30th. This is three months of our fiscal year. On it, revenue for the total month was $290,000. Some of the sources of revenue that we received were general state aid, some special ed reimbursement. We did get our last payment from special ed transportation from 2018. And then we reallocated the registration fees into the correct accounts on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we had a total monthly expenditure of 1.889 million. Once again, salary and benefits is our biggest expenditure. And our audit district tuition was $97,000. Our fund balances at the end of September are listed down there, 18.6 million. The board did restrict the 3 million, just wanna keep reminding that. We have not used any of that 3 million that is restricted. If we move on to board book page 14, you'll see the balance sheet with beginning balances plus our revenue expenditures to the end of the month of September, showing what our ending balances are. As we move the board book page 15, we highlight the revenues as a percentage of our budget. Everything is tracking pretty much the same as what it was last year with it. We continue to monitor this each month. I don't see anything out of the ordinary here that would be a red flag to look at. As we move to the expenditure side, everything is still tracking exactly pretty much where it is. I know, I always mention that operations and maintenance is a little higher as a percentage because we did pay our service provider, Airmark, the full amount, that's why it's a little higher. That takes you through the monthly financial statements. On the revenue expense report, there was one question submitted in regards to the superintendent's paid service account. This was incorrectly credited on this account. What this is, is our new fingerprinting device that we have in our business office. The revenue that was collected should have went into a revenue account, and instead of crediting the paid service account, I wanna track it as a revenue. So it was adjusted to other revenue under the ed fund. So that will, that has been adjusted, it'll be reflected on the next month's financials.
Thank you.
The student activity account is also in there for the month ending September. There was one activity account that was in the negative for puppets. They were doing a fundraiser. The money did come in and should be back to a positive balance in next month's financials. And then the last report that's in board book is the first quarter rental report, showing surplus deficit for our rentals that we had. Total revenue brought in was $23,000. We paid out $6,000, so we had a surplus of roughly $16,900 for the first quarter, and this is for paid rentals.
I asked before, but can you take the word profit off of all this stuff?
Yeah.
We're a government agency, we don't make profits.
Yep, that's gotta be surplus. And there were no questions submitted for the financial officers' report.
Any questions, ladies? John? Okay. Next to him is on Page-
Visitor comments.
We'll skip all the visitors. Discussion information items. Does anybody want to add any items to discuss today? Ladies? John? Okay, police department radios.
No update.
Old business life safety capital improvements.
No update.
We did be the annual financial report fiscal year 2018 audit. That brings us to the electricity contract.
Electricity and gas contracts. We submitted a first read to the board, comments were submitted, Scott's working with the attorneys, I think they're close to finalizing them, and we'll have a second read for the board at the next board meeting.
The, the second set of documents captured it the way that you described it last time.
Yes.
And the electric is in pretty good shape, except they raised the rates from what we proposed.
Yes.
They're not the lowest bidder, are they?
They are, they are not.
So if I were to-
Rates do fluctuate, they were the lowest at the-
But they jumped up a lot, and the other two barely changed. Did they have some indication that we were ready to climb onto them or something?
No, you know, I asked them to give me their best, their best quote that is available, all the vendors did that.
Okay.
And the pricing that is out there is based on-
The market.
-their weather forecast and their predictions with it, so unfortunately, that's what they came back with.
Well, unfortunately, unless they lower their price between now and next time, we can't use them, because there, we'd be violating the state law, right?
Right.
We don't, we have to give it to the lowest bidder?
I don't believe in this particular case that that would be it, because if we go out again, there's a potential that the one that was the highest could be the lowest.
That is true, but at the time we entered the agreement, don't we have to choose the lowest bidder?
I don't believe so, with electricity.
Let's check with the attorney.
Okay. We could solve it pretty easily, tell them if they don't lower their prices, we might have to go somewhere else.
Isn't it off only by like a point?
Point zero zero two.
Yeah, but-
So then ask them to go down point, point zero zero two.
Ask them to go back to what they offered the first time, tell them the other ones didn't change the rates. That's what I would-
I understand the concerns, you know, it's whatever they're quoted on that particular day. The issue that I have is, at that particular time, I went with what the lowest is, and then I don't want to have to continuously keep going through contract revisions with various vendors.
None of us do, we have to follow the law.
So what we'll do, Scott, is we'll call them and tell them we'd like them to go with the original, or they submit it. Otherwise, we're going to have to reopen the process. But we can visit this, and you can handle that.
You two can take care of that. Anything else on electric or gas? But we would like to wrap this up next meeting if we can, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Prices may, may change here too with it as it goes into the winter months, just to-
It's, the winter month shouldn't change the prices for next year, if they're telling you that they're blowing smoke at you. Okay, the winter prices obviously are higher, but they don't raise the rates for next June.
We'll talk to the vendor.
That means it moves to new business then? The first item is the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the district and North Riverside for the baseball fields.
Yes, so as you can see, the agreement's already been signed by the village. This is an agreement, amendment prepared by our legal counsel, and it's just us covering the, they're doing some field improvements on Field One, I believe it is, at Village Commons, it's the only field that wasn't updated, but that's where we play varsity and JV softball. And so now they'll have dugouts, regulation backstop, and the agreement provides us some protection should there be any kind of, anybody wants to cancel the agreement, we'll receive a reimbursement cycle prorated over ten years, and they'll continue to follow all the other terms of the agreement. And I checked one over yesterday and checked on it, and they already, the village was handling all the demo and concrete removal, and they were almost fifty percent done as of yesterday at noon.
So Dr. Skinkis brought this to the board at least two meetings ago, discussed the issue and the amount, and I think we kind of had a consensus that we wanted to go forward, and as you can see, the, they drafted the amendment, and North Riverside already approved it in front of their village board, and they're already doing the work. And we asked, or he suggested probably, and we agreed to address a couple of things. One is that we have priorities since we're going to pay this money to use the fields, and that's in the amendment. And the second one is that if the village ever terminated the agreement during a period of time, that we get some of our money back, and they did a nice, I think it's a very fair, it's a annual proration on like a straight-line amortization of what we paid. If they cancel it after the first year, we get ninety percent of our money, so forth, and if they cancel it in the tenth year, we get ten percent of our money back. Is there any, do you have any questions or anything? Then I think-
I'd like to get that approved tonight.
Does somebody want to read the resolutions on Page two thirty-nine?
Sure, I will. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the amendment to the March eighteenth, 2013 intergovernmental agreement for the school district's use of the village fields and the village's use of the school's swimming pool. The district shall reimburse the village of North Riverside for the construction of the fence improvements to the ball fields within forty-five days after the completion of the improvement, and after the village of North Riverside presents invoices to the district directly related to the construction of the fence improvements. The fence costs shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars as presented in the October twenty-third, 2018 Board Agenda Packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to say something. I want to thank North Riverside for being such a great neighbor, and helping look after our athletic teams for the last decade.
Six, seven years while I've been here.
Right, I mean, we're a landlocked school, and it's nice to have the neighboring villages step up and, you know, support our high school athletes.
Well said.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Yes. Now we move on to matters for closed session, which are personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase or lease of real property probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. There's no visitors, so we're going to skip over to visitor comments. There were no discussion items. Is there anybody who would like to propose any items to be considered at any future meetings right now? Ladies? John?
I think I said my piece during the meeting.
Okay. Would somebody like to read the resolution?
Sure, right here. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase or sale, purchase, excuse me, purchase or lease of real property probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Is there a second? John?
Dr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
And Ms. Turner?